The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Okay, so good evening. I have a couple of things to report on. First, I wanted just to mention that if you haven't driven by Station or Prairie recently, you will notice that the mobiles are gone. So please take a watch for that, and I'm sure we'll hear more about that with Dr. Harris's report. I also just wanted to remind the board that there is a ribbon cutting ceremony on June 26th in a couple Saturdays from now. You can check out Dr. Harris's report for the Joe Kelch Senior Dreamway that will be able to walk in a couple of weeks. Also, in your board packet from Dr. Harris was the Triple I Conference, so please let Janine know if you're going to plan to attend. It will be downtown in Chicago in November. And I understand from our meeting this afternoon about 600 people have already signed up, so make sure we get in there. So, the board also met today. As most people know, we had our workshop. We reviewed and accepted foundational principles for effective governance. We also updated our board protocols, which we'll see on our agenda on July 13th. And we also did a first pass on our board priorities. So we got a lot done this afternoon. So I think it was a very productive session, and I think I can speak for the whole board and say that we are agreeing to work together well, and we are hopeful to show you and demonstrate to the community how well we're going to work together. So, thank you, board members, for our great day today. All right, so, we have a couple retirements that I wanted to just point out to the community. The first one I wanted to just recognize was Anne Boncimino, who has had more than 30 years of service in the district, and she will be retiring. So she's most recently been in reception here at the administrative office, so lots of communication with the board there. And also Ava Detloff, who has been our nursing coordinator most recently, but served more than 20 years in the district. So she's worked with us several times, obviously a lot in this past year. But I know Angela and I have talked with her a lot in policy, and Ava will be missed, and you'll see some new folks coming in on the personnel report. And then I also wanted to recognize Janine Vaughn, who's also retiring here from the Administrative Center. Janine, maybe some of you know, maybe some of you don't know, was the board recording secretary for more than 10 years. So we've known her and appreciated her work, and she has spent more than 20 years in the district. So I wanted to make sure that we recognized them. And we may have another retirement that we just wanted to mention. I will be brief, but to paraphrase from Carbonella, "You are truly, Dr. Harris, a leader of leaders." And Barrington 220 is a better place because of your leadership and your service here. And you will be remembered for leading us through the pandemic while also continuing to enhance the curriculum and education for all students in the district. And for that, we're appreciative. But you will also never be forgotten for your efforts and your contributions to our recent referendum and Bill 220. And so we wanted to leave you with a little bit of a token of our appreciation that we acquired from a recent groundbreaking at Station.
Wow.
So, maybe you can just read that for us?
Seven years of excellence. Thank you for your leadership and dedication, 2014 to 2021. Wow, Dr. Brian Harris.
So, thank you on behalf of the board.
My wife's gonna love this somewhere.
Thanks for all that helped us make this possible. So perhaps at the end of the evening, guys, we've got some things to sign. Maybe we can pose for a momentous photo.
That'd be fantastic. Please do that for your release.
Please, board members, don't run out.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're very, very welcome. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna put it right there.
That was the shovel from Station.
Yes.
Was that Station?
That was from Station.
All right. That's even better. As you know, I spent five years there as a assistant principal.
Well, we made sure there's lots of meaning in that shovel.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So that is all that I have. So next up on our agenda is public comment, and we have, okay, nine folks. So I will just call them in order that's listed here. So Monica Casey is up first. And while Monica, you're coming up, I will just remind everyone, we've now come to the portion of the meeting when we have set aside for time for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions. And in accordance with the Board Policy 2230, we ask that you state your name, elementary attendance area, and in relationship to the district before the beginning of your comments. We also ask that you limit your time to three minutes, and Janine will have a timer for us. And while this is not a conversation, if we have any comments that require further follow-up, we'll ask Dr. Harris to follow up and get back and report to the board. Please also refrain from directing any concerned comments to individual staff or community members and address the issue and not people. In order to follow as many as possible to speak, if anyone else has spoken and you've represented your views, please do not feel the need to repeat their comments, but stand up and represent that you agree with them. So, thank you. Monica.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Monica Casey. I am a parent of District 220 for the last 15 years, and I'm reaching out to all of you regarding the topic of mask mandates that was briefly discussed at the last meeting, but it was not resolved and, I think, sideboarded at the last meeting. It's a critical topic among several with respect to the negative and permanent impacts on our children for the upcoming school year and beyond. I urge you to place priority and consider lifting the mask mandate for Barrington students at today's meeting. As Dr. Harris had indicated, we will follow, he will follow, the IDPH guidelines unless directed otherwise by the board. The District 220 Board of Education can vote for this and definitely has the ability to unmask our students. Several school districts throughout Illinois have done this already, having parents responsible in deciding their children's health, decisions, and well-being. Any adult concerned about getting COVID-19 has had the ability to be vaccinated since, really, February of 2021. However, it is not formally approved for children by the FDA nor recommended by our family doctor based on recently identified serious long-term effects as well as many unknown factors. We are no longer in an emergency state of affairs regarding COVID-19. We have reached stage five in Illinois, which is great, with lifted mask mandates and only generalized subjective guidance regarding masks. The CDC is consistent in its data showing that there is virtually 0% risk to children regarding COVID death or complications. As members of this community, it's imperative to make this a priority. Masks dehumanize and desensitize our children. Requiring masks for students throughout the day is both physically and psychologically detrimental to their development. Over the past year, our medical providers have indicated health issues directly as a result of wearing masks, including staph infections on the face, nasal infections, sinusitis, eye infections, conjunctivitis, along with a myriad of breathing and anxiety issues. The long-term negative effects of masking are many, and yet so avoidable and so unnecessary. I implore you as representatives of Barrington D220 to be leaders and advocate for what our community, our parents, which is the sole reason you are in your respective positions, are actively asking of you. I hope you will bring this forward with a sense of leadership, positivity, and hope for the entire school district going forward. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Monica.
Good evening. My name is Allison Rohrbach, and I teach general music at Sunny Hill. I am also the Communications Chair for the Barrington Education Association. On behalf of the BEA, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Harris for his seven years of service to District 220 and congratulate him on his retirement. Obviously, the last year has not provided a smooth sale into retirement. Instead, the seas were unpredictable and sometimes treacherous. Every superintendent and school district in the country were tested in so many ways. In our BEA meetings, we often commented that while we were losing sleep with worry, anxiety, and fear, we knew that you were too, and that we didn't envy your position or that of the Board of Education for that matter. Through it all, we appreciated that you used our local public health department to guide your decision-making. It was the right thing to do. We all acknowledged, often, how ahead of the game we were due to the One to World Technology Investment that you oversaw, as well as the state-approved e-learning plans that were already in place months prior to those fated days in March 2020. We look forward to teaching and learning in the new or updated spaces that the referendum funds will provide, and we are grateful that you clearly communicated to the greater community what our students and aging buildings needed. After a year such as this, we hope that in the coming year, the pace slows down a bit and the burden lightens. We hope you enjoy not making any critical decisions on snowy winter days other than coffee or hot chocolate. And maybe you'll even get hooked on a new TV show on Tuesday nights. After this year, we hope that you can strike the word pivot from your vocabulary, unless you're referring to an amazing play during an Illini basketball game. Best wishes to you in your retirement, Dr. Harris. On behalf of the BEA, thank you for your dedication and service to Barrington 220.
Thank you, Allison.
Kaya Kraus. Hi, my name is Kaya Kraus. I'm a lifelong resident of Barrington, and I have three children that are in or have been through the district. As I've stated in an email to Dr. Harris and the board, masking is not a benign intervention, and it is ineffective at preventing aerosol transmission and stopping COVID-19. We know this to be supported by the WHO, the CDC, and Dr. Fauci of NIAID. If you know otherwise, I respectfully ask the board to provide data and science that supports universal masking of our children or that you lift the mask requirement. Why are our children still required to wear masks? At the last board meeting, the board voted for three to keep elementary students in masks on a 90-degree day. This decision should have been to make masking optional, giving the control to the parents to manage their own risk assessment on one of the most loved days of school. Sensibly, the reasoning behind the decision was to keep kids in masks was to avoid quarantines and school closures. This illustrated the board's inability to appropriately understand risk assessment. One, there was one week remaining in school. Two, these events were conducted outdoors where risk of transmission of COVID is practically zero. Three, the population is not at risk of COVID nor at risk of high transmission rates. And four, to make masking optional allows parents to determine risk and their level of comfort with potentially missed school days. Finally, I'd heard at least three stories in the last few weeks of children visiting the nurse that day. There are probably more. This four-three decision showed a lack of courage to do what is right for the children and a lack of understanding of threat of COVID outdoors and to this population. During that same meeting, a discussion of removing masks was met with concern of funding. I worry that the board is afraid to lose funding from ISB and will choose money over the well-being of its students. I also wrote the board asking them to review data collected this year on contact tracing and quarantining of healthy students. How many students were quarantined? How many hours of in-person school and extracurricular activities were lost? How many of these healthy kids in quarantine ultimately tested positive for secondary transmission while in quarantine? My guess is very few, but the data needs to be analyzed so that the district can do what is right for our students. The BOE has authority to make its own decisions. Isolating healthy people makes no sense at all. JAMA published secondary asymptomatic spread at 0.7%. After analyzing the data presented to the community, we want our children, we do not want our healthy children missing school and falling behind. IDPH has removed emergency order. There are no more mandates. Make masking optional and revise, or even better, remove contact tracing procedures as appropriate for our district. Thank you for your time.
Hello. I'm Heather Ewald. I have four kids in the district. And first, I'd just like to welcome all the new board members. It's so exciting to see new faces, and it's my first meeting since you guys are all here again. And congrats to the new board president and everyone. And thank you so much for, I had a senior, so I wanted to thank you deeply from the bottom of my heart for making graduation happen. And it was just amazing, and I'd just like to say, can we do it like that every year? So, it was just wonderful. And congrats to Brian, and, you know, on your retirement, and I'm sure you're gonna have a great time with that amazing pension. All right. Second, I'd like to rejoice with all of us here at the official end of our pandemic, and Illinois totally, in Phase Five, totally reopened. I went to Chicago, and it was like good old days again. So that was pretty cool. That said, I'm here to ask you, as our board, because you are the voice of us parents, to please lift our mask mandates. Please let masking be optional for our children. Any adult who has faith in the vaccine has been able to get one, and we all know COVID only very rarely kills children, and we all know now that children rarely spread COVID. The vaccine, however, is experimental, and many families I know are not okay with subjecting their children to this experimental medical therapy. My husband also is in pharma, so I do have a little experience from that side. So, many of our students will not be vaccinated, and I just ask you to please not force the unvaccinated children to remain masked and segregate them into essentially being masked and unmasked. And forcing them, I feel, forcing them to wear masks will cause them to feel singled out and feel unwelcome at school. And just not to mention, it's often difficult for them to breathe and just uncomfortable. So, I'd just like you to please consider the psychological impact this will have on our children who, for whatever reason, are not vaccinated to segregate them. So, just once again, just ask you to please remove the mask mandate for all our children, and let's love and accept all of our children equitably. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Laura Erman. I have a third grader at Linds, and I'm also an educator with a master's from DePaul and a decade of experience as a teacher and school administrator. I understand that you're all in a difficult spot, but I'm deeply concerned about the IDPH's plans for vaccinating children, instituting weekly testing of unvaccinated students, and penalizing students who do not submit to this violation of their rights. I appreciate that you feel like your hands are tied. You say your funding is being threatened, but it sounds more like blackmail to me. The measly 9% of our budget that comes from state funding is determined by legal formulas that are based on attendance. So you need to question the legality of such claims when state agencies are making them. All adults who feel like they're at risk have access to a vaccine now. I got one myself, and I respect that some parents are gonna choose to get their children vaccinated when that's made available. I'm simply asking that you respect my choice for my child, because I've also made it by following the science. This preventative cure has a worse outcome for children than the sickness itself. My son contracted COVID in May, and it's without a doubt the mildest sickness he has ever had, and it's like that for most children. Children are three times more likely to die in car accidents or from drowning, yet we're still putting our kids in cars. We're still letting them swim. So why have we decided that school is too high-risk if we eagerly engage in far more dangerous activities? Twenty-eight states have either removed or now prohibit mask mandates for schools. So it's time to push back on the IDPH and their mandates. Remind them that cloth masks are not effective, especially when improperly worn. Even Dr. Fauci admitted this in writing. I saw kids in the pickup line every day. Don't pretend like they're wearing these masks properly. And for kids like my son, who has Tourette syndrome, masks are harmful. Within days of returning to full-day instruction, his tics became the worst that we have ever experienced. Within a week of no longer having to wear a mask for seven hours a day, including recess, his tics dropped off dramatically. My son is not getting an experimental vaccine. I'm not consenting to weekly testing, and children who aren't vaccinated shouldn't be singled out or forced to wear masks or excluded from extracurricular activities. We would never let kids be visually marked, marginalized, and mistreated for any other medical difference. So please, please remember, you serve the interests of our children, not political agendas, not pharmaceutical companies, or medical testing companies, like the one that our governor is heavily invested in. In closing, I want to remind you of a few words that people often emphasize when vehemently protecting women's reproductive rights. My body, my choice. So I'm gonna echo that sentiment here tonight. My child, my choice. Thank you for your time.
Julie LeBlanc.
Hi there. Thank you for having me. My name is Julie LeBlanc. I have three children who have gone through Barrington 220 schools, and I've been here since 2013. And I wanted to raise my concern for a state bill, 818, which many of you may have heard about already. And the title of the state bill, which is now passed the House and the Senate, is called Keeping Youth Safe and Healthy Act. What a wonderful title. However, let me please just share with you what this bill is about. This is nothing other than an incremental sexualization of our children. As you know, the sex ed bill states that beginning no later than July 1, 2023, all public school districts, including charter schools, are required to provide comprehensive personal health and safety education in kindergarten through the fifth grade, and comprehensive sexual health education in the sixth through 12th grades in all public schools. So when this bill sponsored, State Senator Rahm Villivalam, was asked by State Senator Sue Ruzin for the breakdown of what's to be taught for second grade, fifth and eighth grade, he responded, and I quote, "In younger grades, like kindergarten through second, the focus is on personal safety, what it means to be a good friend, and being able to talk to parents and trusted adults when someone wants you to do something that makes you feel uncomfortable or unsafe." However, he did not mention the following. Let me please state this. So in grades K through 12, now we're talking five to seven-year-olds, education will be expected to align with the National Sex Education Standards, which is the 74-page document, which, if you have time, go through it. It's very interesting. And I don't know who comes up with these standards, but there's no such thing as a National Sex Education Standard. This is put together by a special interest group. Okay, so, in grades K through 2, education will be aligned according to this quote-unquote standard. These students will be able to define gender, gender identity, and gender role stereotypes, and how those sex-based conventions may quote-unquote limit behavior. They will also be expected to identify different kinds of families cohabiting in same gender, et cetera, et cetera. In grades three through five, this is five and seven-year-olds, okay? In grades three through five, education will cover healthy relations and safety, but also delves into what children at those ages are experiencing, like social, physical, emotional changes related to puberty. However, again, Rahm did not mention the following information, which comes straight from this National Sex Education Standard. Let me just share with you some of these things in grades three through five, and I'm quoting directly from this document. Explain common human sexual developing, including masturbation. Two, describe the potential role of hormone blockers on young people who identify as transgender. Next, distinguish between sex assigned birth and gender identity. Explain how they may or not differ, on and on. I'm just asking you, as a parent, to just please carefully and thoughtfully consider what this bill will do to the mental health of our students. These are our children. So, I would ask to contact Pittsburgh. It's already been passed in the House and the Senate, and it's gone to his desk now, and he has 60 days to respond. He could resign any day, and he could also refuse. So please carefully and consider this bill that our school district will be facing. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Mary Ellen Johnson. I live in the Village. I have three kids who are either in the district or have graduated from the district. And I also want to bring up SB 818, the sex ed bill. And Julie already explained what the bill actually says, but I want to just tell you that there are many parents that do oppose this. And I also want you to know that this material, while Julie was just reading off what was in there, what is also in this material is highly graphic, unnecessarily so, multiple images for elementary school children on how to insert a tampon, for instance. And even though they have, there are other really vulgar things in there, including in sixth grade, sixth graders, how to use prophylactics for certain sex acts that don't produce reproduction but are very similar in nature, and I think you might know what I'm talking about. And these same standards that they're trying to pass and that this board is gonna decide whether our schools are gonna be teaching this stuff, they have the kids use such terms as blue balls, but they're not allowed to use the term "parents." So you really need to think again about what it is that we're planning to teach the kids. There are other ways to promote things like empathy, empathy for, you know, one another. All children are different, and we understand that. There are other ways to promote empathy. And then the other thing is, if there are children that have questions of this nature, you know, such as how to do these certain things, why not have the teacher then say, if anybody has any further questions during reproductive curriculum, is what I'm talking about. So during reproductive curriculum, right after, the teacher can simply say, you know, we have a counselor that you can come and speak to with any further questions you may have. You don't have to go into graphic detail. That really is, you know, stuff that I don't even want to, you know, have to read and look at. This is ridiculous. Anyway, thank you so much.
Reed Peterson?
Hello, my name is Reed Peterson, and I'm going into eighth grade next year. Before I start my speech, I would like for you to know that I wrote the speech all on my own without help from my parents or anyone else. I would like to ask you, the Barrington District's 220 School Board, to make masks optional for the 2021-2022 school year for all teachers and students of the district. If you take a look around for a moment, you will notice that masks are optional in this room, and school is no different from this room. While in school with a mask, I have noticed myself being lightheaded, my stomach hurts, and not being able to concentrate with a mask, along with not being able to breathe correctly. I would like you to note that I have never felt like this before in school in my entire life. I have a hard time hearing my teachers because the mask muffles their voice, and I cannot see their facial expressions as clearly as I would if they did not have a mask on. We have moved into Phase Five of Reopening Illinois, which means we will be fully open, schools and everything. I'm speaking for all of the students that feel the same way but cannot gather the courage to come up here and speak to you guys, the board. The community has elected you to represent us in our opinions, as you all have agreed to. Now it is time to see if you break that agreement or stay with what you have pledged to do. Vote to make masks optional in school now. Thank you.
Last up, Marsha McCleary?
Hello, everyone. I'm Marsha McCleary. I have five children, ranges seven to 16 years old, and we're in the Countryside Grade School District area. Welcome to the new board members. Thanks for taking so much of your time on a nice summer evening, and congratulations, Brian, on your well-deserved retirement and everything you've done for our district. We're very excited about the referendum. My kids put out signs, and we're happy to see it through now, finally. So luckily, half of my conversation was covered, so now I'm the data person. So I spent almost 20 years in the vaccine and pharmaceutical development industry, which makes me have a unique perspective. They no longer pay me either. I have my own business, so I do not have any reason to really be biased, in my opinion. Some of my roles in that included evaluating drug candidates from going into the next phase of development, whether we're going to continue to fund them, cancel them, debase on outcomes. Part of that process included looking at risk assessments and standard probability Part of that process included looking at risk assessments and standard probability of success or failure. Failure for drugging vaccine candidates involves efficacy as well as safety. Now, in this case, we have, you know, these authorized vaccines. They are not approved, though. That means they've shown efficacy, but they have not shown safety. That is why they are called authorized only. They are meant for lifesaving treatments. You can read all of this. This is not misinformation. This is not, it's right on the leaflets, on the pamphlets they give you when you get it, says it there. So I'm not making this up. And I'm not trying to scare anybody, because the risk benefit of these decisions depend on your risk of COVID. And that's my opinion, but I think that's what most physicians would say to you, is what's your risk of COVID? The higher the risk, the higher the benefit of the vaccine for you versus walking around exposing yourself to COVID. So I just say, I've never seen an assessment of a vaccine or drug in my life in Phase Three where we're at today, especially with pediatrics, that has less than a 10% chance of failure for safety. Okay? It's not less than 1%, 10 or more. Okay? So that's just purely statistics that the industry uses based upon historical data, where we're at today in development, because we are in a big Phase Three trial, especially with kids. So I, I'm not trying to scare anybody, but, you know, it's like with these kids, we don't have enough data. That's why they're not approved. So we cannot push this and medically discriminate on our kids. I feel so strongly about this. I could not even sleep at night. I didn't want to say anything to you guys, but I just, it just makes me sick, like to think about this, because I know what I know, and I've seen stuff. I've seen failures, I've seen adverse events, and I'm, and we have, so I'm going to email you guys all this data. You can look it up yourself. CDC database stuff. The VA ERS system, it isn't perfect, but it is the system the CDC and the FDA uses to report adverse events. And it's self-reported data by practitioners. There are hundreds of thousands of unreconciled, unfinished reports in that database. Even if half of them are wrong, it's too much for me, okay, for our kids. And so I just want us to be really careful. All the momentum in the state is very scary to me about what they want with vaccines. And it's just, to me, it's a choice. Everybody needs to get educated, not by the media, not by the government. You're going to need to talk to your doctor and look at the data. And that's what I feel very strongly about. And then, based on what everybody said, same thing, kids are much more likely to die or be injured in a car accident or swimming. We do this every day. They can go out, they can be unmasked, and they can live their life. All the adults in at risk can get vaccinated. So I ask for you to really consider that and not follow the guidelines. If our state is behind or under resourced to get there, that's, I get that. You know, they're trying to catch up. We are all compassionate. We understand, but, you know, it's hard to get back to reality. But we ask that you guys consider our information, our data. Look at it with wisdom. Look at it with your, with your eyes, and I will provide it to you. I have a six-page paper I'm going to send you with all the data, so you can look at it yourselves to make the decisions and not listen to the media. Please, I beg you, okay? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. All right. That concludes our public comments. Why don't we move into your report, Dr. Harris?
A minute here. There we go. It is. Okay. Well, first of all, I just want to thank the board and, and the community members and staff that, for your kind comments. Thank you. Appreciate it. And I'll get to that in a minute. I've got some thoughts here at the end, but I do have some important stuff I want to update the board on as part of my report. First of all, as we had talked about over the last couple of meetings, I had said that I would continually update the board. As we all know, things continue to evolve and change at the state level, local level, when it comes to public health and, and ISBE. Actually, the State Board of Education has a meeting tomorrow, and I do know many of my colleagues around the area will be speaking during public comment. Based on our comments tonight, I would encourage our parents, if you feel that passionate about it, talk to our State Board of Education. Their meeting's tomorrow. It's online. You can submit comments to them. I would encourage you to do that. I can tell you, I have been, and I will continue to. I have been directly involved with advocacy, you know, all along, but on this topic most recently, you know, to try and make sense of where we're headed for the 21-22 school year, okay? But at this point, we have not received any significant change from the state level. As I had indicated to the board in my communications, what I anticipate is that we will get guidance from the state, revise your guidance for 21-22 school year, once all of the school districts in the state have finished this current school year, which has not happened yet. We still have districts still in session, and I, I just know that that's a key piece that they will wait on until those districts conclude the school year. So once that happens, which I anticipate in the next week to 10 days, I do believe we will get some updated information. But the advocacy piece to allowing local districts to make, you know, have more flexibility, be able to make decisions for their given circumstances, certainly is something not only I have been doing, but also all of the superintendents in the suburban area that I, you know, network with periodically. And in fact, I was on a statewide call yesterday. We were preparing a draft letter that's going to be read tomorrow morning at the State Board of Education meeting. So I think it's critically important to continue to do that, and we'll see where that falls. But I do anticipate that coming sometime in the next week or two, okay, once the school year ends across the state of Illinois. A couple of things I did want to mention as well. Summer school's in full swing. It's going very well at all levels. So, you know, I was actually in a couple of the buildings over the last week, and, and summer school is, is going really well. I mean, the kids are engaged, and, and we weren't sure how summer school was going to roll this summer after such a very difficult, challenging year, but it's, it's going well and at all levels. So I'm very happy to, to hear that. The construction at the middle school level, Sandra referenced, has started, so it's exciting. The construction fences are up. You're right, the mobiles were the first to go. There was Craig, Dr. Winkelman, the principal at station for many, many years, happily helped demo the one over at station, right? And so that was a momentous, you know, opportunity for sure. So we're excited about that, and we're off and running and to get those additions and that renovation done at our middle schools, hopefully on schedule as we move forward. I do want to take, you know, a brief opportunity to introduce a couple of people here in the audience tonight on the personnel report for the board's consideration and the consent agenda. We have two administrative hires, and I want to welcome Bridget Herrup. Bridget is our recommendation to fill the vacancy of the nursing coordinator for the district. What a critical role right now, I can tell you. Eva and I have been best buddies for about 15 months, every day, trying to make sense of understanding, you know, what, what's happening in and around us. So Bridget, I know you've been involved in your current district and in that role, and we're excited about having you join us as our new nursing coordinator for the district. So a preliminary congratulations. We'll wait till the board takes the action, and then we'll go from there. You can see her credentials as well. We also had a recent vacancy in our Director of Special Education role. Jordan Anderson is here tonight as well, and welcome to Jordan, pending the board's approval. She also will be, you know, serving in this new role as the Director of Student Services at the elementary level, working with all of our elementary principals and our programs for special education. So Jordan, welcome, and preliminary congratulations to you as well until the board takes that action. So both of these candidates come highly recommended, and we're excited to recommend them tonight to the board. So I obviously have prepared some comments, and you have to bear with me for a minute, you know? I do, you know, I, I do have to say that this job has been an amazing, you know, leadership opportunity as an educator. You know, as a kid who grew up in central Illinois and started as a high school social studies teacher in 1987, and now to finish my career as a superintendent, in my opinion, is the best school district in the state and arguably the best in the country, you know, it's just been incredible. And, you know, one thing's for certain, you know, this community supports education, the passion of parents is, you know, not matched anywhere else, there's no doubt about it, and that's what makes it good. That's what makes it, you know, a place that educators want to work, parents want to live, kids want to come to school here. So, and I've been fortunate to be the leader. I want to, you know, start off by a couple of comments here. In May of 2014, the Board of Education at that time, Brian Battle, Penny Casimir, Sandra Bradford, Joe Ruffalo, Wendy Farley, Chris and Dick, you know, they, they gave me an opportunity, right? Chris Guire and, and Dick, yeah, Dick Burkhart. They gave me an opportunity to, you know, be here, and I, I thank you for that. And Sandra's the only board member sitting here at the time that I was hired, and each of the, many of you probably know those community members as well, former board members, all great people and passionate about the schools in this community. And, and it was just a wonderful opportunity at that time. I also want to thank Angela, six years, she's been sitting here, right, every Tuesday night with me, and came on the board shortly after that, that first year. Also want to thank Gavin Newman and Mike Shackleton for their four years of time with me as well as superintendent. And finally, Leah and Barry, the last two years. We've been through some interesting times, right, in your two years of service on the board with the referendum, and then obviously the, the pandemic and navigating that. So it hasn't been normal or typical. I can tell you that, for those of you who've been there longer, you know. So, and for the new board members, you know, obviously, we've just had a couple of meetings together, but, you know, it's, it's an amazing community service opportunity, and, and you've got a, you know, a new opportunity with the new superintendent, and I know you've already began that work, and, and looking forward to watching from a distance the great things that are, are going to happen. I also want to take the opportunity to thank my administrative team. They're all here tonight, and, you know, you're only as good as the people around you. And, you know, I've, I've had the opportunity to hire each of you into the roles over the seven years, and some of you were already in district roles, but I, and I've worked with some of you previously in other opportunities, and it, it's just incredible. And, you know, I've been fortunate. You know, again, as I said, this is a destination district for employees as well. And, you know, we, we certainly are blessed in that fashion, and I want to thank all of you for your support and for doing the great work of this school district. The teachers, I thank you to Allison and the BEA. Allison was the spokesperson this evening, you know, for their work. We've worked together. We've had a great partnership in my seven years. We've worked through, you know, challenges, most significantly over the last 15 months, no doubt about it. But on the other hand, you know, that, that partnership is critical, and the relationship with our employees and our support staff as well, and the BSEO. You know, we have 800 staff members in the district, a support staff, and they're also incredible support to all of our schools and, and the district level. You know, and I think one highlight of that, from my perspective, is for two years in a row, under the Chicago Tribune Workplace Award, our staff said this is the best place to work, you know, for, in a school district environment. And it, it's self-explanatory. It's an independent organization that evaluates and surveys our staff. We have nothing to do with it, and they, they recognize us as an exemplary place to work as an employee. So thank you to, for the board for making it that way, you know, for our employees and staff. I also want a special thanks to John Breach. This is his last meeting as well tonight. John is moving on to another district in another role, and I wish him well. And so this will be your final meeting here tonight also. I recently was asked, what are you most proud of? And I will tell you, that's tough. That was, I, I, I didn't have, I'm usually pretty quick with stuff. I can usually respond rather quickly with, you know, a thought. I'm never usually tongue-tied, and I had to think about that one, though. You know, what, one thing, what are you the most proud of? I, I broke it into two categories, so I cheated, but I will share this with myself. One, instructionally. I, and you're going to hear a little bit about this tonight with Dr. Fuller and his thoughts about the Wonder World. I believe the Wonder World program, Allison referenced it from a teaching perspective, the Wonder World program was just beginning when I got here seven years ago. We were just rolling out the MacBook Airs at the high school at that time in the 14, fall of 14, and we took many steps over the next several years. That has had the most incredible instructional impact in our classrooms and instruction and how kids learn, and learn at a high level, and how it's going to impact them down the road. And our job is to prepare them for a college of a career of their choice. And I believe that tool has been critical, and a component of that is the blended learning, right? We, we started that in 2015, and I talked about it in my interview when you interviewed me. I said, you guys just did a huge investment in technology. And I told the board at that time, when we, before you even hired me, I said, now it's the instructional opportunity, right? You've got to leverage that tool and that network to make it happen. And, and I think it's, it's a journey. We haven't arrived. It's, it's not a destination, it's a journey. And with unforeseen circumstance like we've just experienced over the last 15 months, that Wonder World scenario put us in an incredible position to continue the instruction for kids, while it wasn't what any of us wanted, wasn't what I wanted, but it's what we were able to do. Many districts couldn't do that, flat out. I know for a fact, they just couldn't do it. And we were able to, to provide, you know, an incredible instructional experience. And there were some lessons learned, there's absolutely no doubt about it, and I think that will only make us better, you know, in our classrooms as we return back to full in person, and how staff are going to continue to leverage those devices for instructional purposes. The other one, I, the other impact is the referendum. I mean, we spent five years at the table and with the community, talking about a master facility plan, and, and eventually passed the $147 million referendum. That will definitely impact the next generation of students in this community. It, it will be in the next 20 years. You know, what's going to happen here over the next couple of years and the decisions we've made, and how we're going to build out this opportunity the community's provided us. So I will be watching from a distance with smiles on my face. I, I've told all the principals, I'd like, I want to come back when it's done. I want to see how it's happening with kids in the classrooms, in those spaces that we're renovating, and how the instructional components are playing out, because that was the key. It's an instructional master facility plan with, with student learning at the forefront of that, and, and I know that's going to continue. So those are the two things that came to the top of my mind. We spent a huge amount of time here at this table talking about those. And finally, you know, after 34 years, I want to thank my wife. I don't know if she's watching, but she's incredible. Allowed me to do the work I want to do, and, you know, it's been great, and I'm looking to pay it forward and return some of that time. So I know, if you're watching, thank you, Carol, and, and my kids. My kids also, you know, when you're a superintendent, you know, it's, you put a lot of time into what's, what's going on here in this role. And I know my kids, you know, also along the journey. You know, I didn't always get to every single thing, even though I did the most I could. So thank you all. You've got an incredible district, credible opportunities moving forward. I encourage this board, when you develop your master facility plan, you know, that's, that's your opportu, I'm sorry, your master strategic plan, thinking of facilities. Matt, your, your strategic plan, that's your opportunity as this board to move forward in this community. And if I was continuing, I know that's where you're going to be heading with Dr. Hunt, and that's an incredible opportunity to set the next generation in this school district moving forward. So put your time and effort, that's my advice as I exit, you know, into that, that strategic plan, engage the community, and, and, and do the work that I inherited. When I got here, we were in the middle of it, and I was lucky. All I had to do was to figure out how to make things happen, right? You've got the incredible opportunity to create a plan that will guide our schools for the next 15 years. Thank you all. Unless there's any questions, that concludes my report. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Wow. You'd think I was going to get there, at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
Thank you.
And thank you, Carol.
Yeah.
Very, very important recognition there.
Dr. Harris, just the ISBE meeting you mentioned, it's 10:00 AM tomorrow. I think there's a link on the ISBE website in case any of you are interested, and then you can sign up for public participation between 8:30 and 9:30. So, or you can just Google ISBE upcoming meetings, and it'll pop up.
Yeah, it's all very, it's all very self-explanatory.
ISBE, yeah. And then also, even though you're not a Cubs fan, I'm glad, I, I do want to thank you as well, and I'm glad that we overlapped in our six weeks.
Yeah.
And I think you, I peppered you with questions, and you answered all of them very graciously. And thanks for being, you know, definitely one of the best tour guides. Couldn't have a more knowledgeable person show us around the district when Katie and I went, and I think Steve went on a tour too. And thank, and also you seemed ubiquitous, so thank you for being so involved and invested in our kids' education. My son will never forget when you walked into his Huff music class and sat down right next to him and played the ukulele with him.
He was much better than I was.
Maybe you should have sang. I don't know.
Yeah. You have enough time with the song. So thank you for all of that.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Not a question, but more of a comment. I guess the majority of our parents have left, but I think because of their passion, I think we owe to them to put this, put the mask... I think we owe to them to put this, put the asking question on the agenda at the July meeting.
We'll talk about the agenda at the end.
Understood. But I think it's worthwhile, they can still hear us, that, you know, we hear them and that we respect what they've said and, you know, we understand what's in front of us.
All right, so we do have some business we need to get through. So any questions on informational reports? How about updates from committee members? Any committee meetings in the last couple of weeks? All right, it's going to, all right, so how about the consent agenda then? Do we have a motion?
Sandra, I have a question about the consent agenda. Can I move to remove the minutes of the consent agenda?
You may. We don't have a motion on the table yet, so would you like to motion to approve the consent agenda without the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Sure, I'll say that.
Okay.
And I'd like to state that the reason being is similar to what we, to what the question that I posed earlier in the week, which is the minutes include a notation that there was a parent that spoke, but it doesn't actually include the words that that parent provided. And I think we owe to that parent to provide the words that they attempted to deliver to the public. It was not, it was provided to us in writing and I would like to have it added to the minutes.
In addition to them speaking, those that provided a transcript?
Correct.
To include that as well?
Correct.
What's our policy on that?
My understanding, given what I, given my research on this, is that the board president should have the authority to make this decision.
You're asking to do what? I'm sorry, Steve, can you repeat that? What were you asking to add?
Mrs. Kroll, last week?
Yeah.
Made a statement and was unable to complete it. So she left us her written statement.
Say that she provided a written statement?
Well, no, not just that, just to actually post the written statement itself so that it can be all, it can be there for all public consumption. And the reason this came up?
That is clearly up to the board. That is not what we have done. Many times we get a lot of written statements, so that's up to the board. You can direct us to prepare it, whatever the board wants to do, but that is not what we've done in the past.
Understood. But I think given the gravity of some of these topics, it's that particular item as well as from the May 18th meeting. I understand that a gentleman, I won't mention names because we've agreed not to do so, but he also left a written document pertaining to his thoughts and those were also not posted with minutes. And I would like that to be amended as well.
So how about we, I want to make sure we get through the consent agenda tonight. We do have a board policy on public comment. Could we consider that as a topic in an upcoming board meeting so that everybody has a chance to review that?
Absolutely.
And?
My goal is to just remove it from this, from the minutes for the consent agenda at this point and as we agreed, put it to a discussion item for agenda for July 13th.
Does that sound?
The discussion item would be whether or not we would change the policy to include?
I just want to make sure everybody reads the policy and, you know, and has an opportunity to read it before we make a decision.
Okay. Out of curiosity, during the pandemic, parents were allowed to call in and leave a voicemail as, because obviously we weren't coming in. Were those included in the agenda if someone called and left a voicemail for public comment?
The fact that they called in, yes. We had a short description, right, of everyone? Do you mean the agenda or the minutes?
The minutes, I'm sorry. Were their words included in the minutes?
No, but we still had, we retained the video from all of the, so you could, you could s-
Oh, I would love to look at this going forward because I agree, I think they should be included in the minutes.
It should be her.
Yeah.
So let's consider that as a, everybody could, we can add that, make sure we, everybody knows what the policy number is. Everybody take a review of it.
You, colon, 230.
Can you share us the policy?
Yes.
Your email is policy number?
I'm going to make myself a note so I don't forget. So we have a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda minus the minutes and it's been seconded. Any more discussion or are we ready to vote? Okay, roll call please.
Don't you want to say what's on the consent agenda?
I can, I was going to read it after we voted, but.
Oh, after we voted? I'm sorry.
You guys give me feedback. If you want me to read it before, I'm happy to read it before.
Before.
Okay, does everybody want me to read it before? I will do that. Okay, so on the consent agenda this evening, we have finance reports, we have gifts which I'll mention in a moment, we have the 2021 exception bills for May, the 2021 NSLP exception bills for May, the 2021 bill is for June, the 2021 NSLP bill is from June, activity accounts from Barrington High School and K through eight for May, the 2021 wage and payroll report from May, the treasurer's report from May, reverend's and expenditures from May. I want to just mention the gifts that we received this, that we are accepting are from Mr. and Mrs. Thomas Hayward's and bookshelves and chairs and cabinets. So thank you for that kind donation as well as from Lynn Messimer, a harp. So thank you so much for your contributions. We also have a revised personnel report. So hopefully everybody saw the revisions there and we'll exclude the minutes for now. So roll call?
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. So we have passed the personnel report, so we do want to take a couple of minutes, Dr. Harris, to congratulate.
So Jordan, I'll start with Jordan if that's okay. Congratulations officially. Any comments you'd like to just share?
No, I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you all so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, welcome.
Bridgette, any comments?
Thank you. I am very much honored to be a part of the nursing group that's here, looking at the history of Barrington and the nurses. It's incredible. A lot of really amazing leaders. We've had past presidents from Illinois Foundation of School Nurses. And I am set to assume that role in October of 2022, so it will be great to represent Barrington across the state.
Thank you so much. Okay, so before we leave the consent agenda though, do we want to vote on the minutes separately or does everyone prefer that we just move them to the next consent agenda after we've had the discussion? I agree. I just want to make sure we're all in agreement?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we have an action item on approval of the 2020, 2021 amended budget. Does anyone want to make that motion? Do we, anybody want to have?
Just a quick comment. Just a reminder to all board members, we do need several signatures tonight since this is the official budget that we have to submit to the state. Dave, any additional comments real quick?
Yes, thank you. We provided some information for you, sir. Actually looking a little better on this particular budget. I also just wanted to mention to you, there may be some additional upside on top of that based on how property tax receipts actually come in this month. And so obviously we had preparation that happened in advance of tonight. So, you know, the last week or two and over the next week or two, we may yet get some additional receipts that'll come in that may provide a little bit of upside. If we have a lot of upside that happens, you may hear me as we talk about next year's budget when we get to next year, talk about using maybe a similar strategy with, as we did for this last year with our DESEP funds in order to help offset transportation shortfalls next year because that's a lagging reimbursement. Although where it sits right now, I'm really pleased that we've got a positive budget, especially when the board understood we might not be in a positive situation based on what's going on with the pandemic. So I think it's really great news and thank you for your support of the amended budget.
Thank you. Thank you for the summary. Any questions?
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Okay, so we have a couple of discussion items as well. The first one is the One to World device study proposal. Dr. Harris, I'm assuming you're?
Absolutely. I'm going to invite Matt up to the table. Board members, you have received a lengthy document that Dr. Fuller and his staff put together in regard to our current situation with our student devices. We are way out in front of this, this topic and, but therefore it is the appropriate time to initiate this level of conversation. And so we still have, and Dr. Fuller's going to go through this, so I'm just going to give a little preview while he's setting up. I mentioned the Wonder World program and it's been rolling now for many years, but the key to maintaining this is to have these conversations in advance. So when it comes time to make decisions, that the board's prepared and we understand where we're headed and staff has done its work to make sure that we, you know, keep that instructional integrity in place, you know, in the classroom. So, Dr. Fuller?
I'm sorry, Dr. Fuller, I'm pretty sorry. So do we need to do? Anything for consideration to approve confidentiality of closing session minutes?
Do that at the end.
At the end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's at the end.
Thank you.
Right? This is Brian's last presentation, his last board meeting ever. No pressure at all. Just good. Make it good.
Couldn't be a better person sitting there.
Make it good, thanks. So I want to start the presentation by saying that currently the iPad, our current, our current One to World primary device is meeting the educational needs of Barrington 220 as our primary device for our One to World program. This is not just my opinion, this is the opinion of the research that we've done every year since I've been in the district. We have a cyclic way of doing research where we do students one year, parents one year and then staff and we keep doing that over and over again. There are several reports on the website. So we know at this time that the iPad is definitely meeting our needs. And as Dr. Harris alluded earlier in the board meeting, it certainly was a great thing to have in place for the pandemic. Everything was put in place. So with this information, one might be asking the obvious question, so why propose a device study if everything's going well? Well, there are several reasons. Number one, the original device decision was made nearly 10 years ago, right after the cohesive plan was first adopted in the district. And as you can imagine, many devices have come and gone in that 10-year period. So it's something that we're always looking at in the tech world, what devices are available. Also, as we're all very well aware, Barrington 220 teachers are very experienced now using devices, not just because of the pandemic, but because we've been doing this program for a little over seven years now in the district. And the primary timing reason we're talking about this today is because our iPad lease does end at the end of next school year. So now is the perfect time. We have a full semester before, I'll come before the board with a recommendation for the following three years. Now is the right timing to consider if we wanted to look at other device possibilities. And the other thing that I wanted to just let the board know is that we also get questions every time we have a device adoption or a device, we consider purchasing a device. We have questions from community members, from teachers, from board members. Have you considered other devices? So now is a great time to attack this type of a question and do this in advance. I do want to give you a very brief history of the Wonder World program. It did, it was, it did come out of the cohesive planning that started back in 2009. The MacBook Air pilot at the high school started three years later in 2013 where about 20% of VHS piloted MacBook Air laptops. The following year, we did a full rollout at the high school with an iPad pilot at grade six. The following year in 2015, we had a full middle school rollout and elementary iPad pre-launch, followed by the following year, full elementary iPad rollout. And then in 2019, that was the biggest change we've made to the Wonder World program where we decided to switch all the devices to iPad throughout the entire district. I also have talked about the district tech committee many times in the board memo and they are in fact the group of teachers that meets monthly and checks in about how technology's going in the district in general. So they're one of the ways we know what needs to be improved, what's going on, what do teachers need. It was formed in 2014. There are about 40 members, they're mostly teachers, but we also have administrators and support staff on the DTC. And this again is the group that advises, recommends, tests, communicates back to their schools on basically anything instructional, technology related. So in, on the topic of device studies, there are three different considerations I wanted to talk about. Number one, the learning considerations about what devices we're using, the actual considerations of the devices themselves and also the different systems we have in the district. So these are the three areas I'll be talking about specifically. As far as learning considerations, when we first made our device selection in the district and went with the Apple products, that included a couple of years, and this is before I came to the district even, a couple of years of research, just many, many board discussions, many, many board memos that were written by Cindy J. And I know Sandra was here for some of those. We did about, I believe it, the number, the final number was 28 site visits to different districts, a little bit of device testing, a lot of teacher training and professional learning on devices. And at that time, that's when we just, that's when we decided that Apple devices best realize the original program vision. And I did include that in the board memo, if you wanted to go back and look at that. And also the current One to World vision and mission. And I think you'll notice that the original vision and the current One to World vision are very, very similar. And then the vision to the One to World program, I included here. We don't need to read all of these points, but that first one is the one that we probably focus on more than any of the others because it contains the four Cs, the creativity, collaboration, communication and critical thinking. And we believe that the device that we've chosen now best realizes the mission of the One to World statement. As far as considering the devices themselves right now, we've always considered learning and teaching needs as the primary need, but also, but we have also never forgotten about fiscal responsibility. Each time we come before the board with a, with any kind of lease proposal, we always break out that lease proposal over a long number of years and we make sure that it fits in the budgeting constraints that we have for the program in general. Something the board has always been, has been very, very, it's been very positively received and the board has been extremely supportive on this program. The platforms that we originally considered for the different devices were the two Apple platforms, macOS and iOS, it's now called iPadOS, they changed that over the years. We also considered Windows devices, we considered Chrome devices, and we're probably the only school district in the United States that considered Linux devices. We in fact were using some of those at the time we switched over to One to World. And finally, one of the things we learned about our devices that we've been using is that our Apple devices have a very, relatively high residual value at the end of our leasing cycles. We do, I'll talk about the specific leasing cycles in a moment, but at the end, when we're finished using them, the devices have almost 30% of their original value. So we're able to sell those back to an asset company and actually put that back into our program. As far as system considerations, one of the first discussions I have with people when they find out I work with a school district in technology or parents in the district is it's not the same as you're buying devices from your home. You don't just buy a device and hand it out. There are many, many more systems in place that need to be considered for a school district. First of all, our infrastructure. Infrastructure would be the Wi-Fi system, things like the firewall, the switches and the closets, the way that the district is networked together, wired and wirelessly. And these things are fairly non-device specific. We're going to have these infrastructure systems no matter what technology we choose. However, there are some device-specific systems that are really important here. Probably the number one being our MDM, our mobile device management system. We currently use a system called JAMF and that helps us manage both our iPads and our MacBook Air laptops. Also apps, of course, they're written for specific devices. So just because we own, we own about, I think the number currently is about 1.2 million different apps, if you consider all of the ones that are installed. Those are all specifically for our iPads right now. So those would be something we'd have to consider if we change devices, we'd have to replace all those. And then of course, professional development for teachers and support staff. Those are all, these are all things that I would consider significant district investments that will go into any kind of discussion of changing devices. As far as lease cycles, we currently enter low-interest leases with a $1 buyout. And when I say low interest, I mean it. The current one we're on is, I believe, 0.8% APR, and they've all been under 2% since I've been in the district. Our iPads are on a three-year lease cycle, and our laptops are on a four-year lease cycle currently. And that's how we, we've always done it since I've been in the district with our One to World program. We did readjust the lease cycle in 2019 and got all of our primary devices, our iPads, on the exact same lease, so we bought a little over 10,000 iPads all at once. We got the best possible pricing, the best possible APR, and also, we were able to get a lot of services because we had such a large lease all at once. And as I alluded to at the beginning, in January, February of 2022, I'll bring forward, I would, I plan to bring forward some sort of a proposal for the devices for the next school year, and usually, that decision comes from the board sometime in March, and then we're able to order the devices, they come in around April or May, we distribute them before the end of the school year, and then that device is used for the next three school years. So, that brings us to the, the schedule in general. We have all of first semester next year to do any kind of device study if we wanted to go down that path. So, at this time, I'd like to talk about the, the specifics of the device study proposal. If we were going to, if we were starting a one-to-one program for the first time in this district, like some, some districts are, and we've never done this before, we would likely consider one of these four devices. Obviously, the Apple iPad, which we're already using. Also, we could also consider an Apple laptop, as we've used in the past. I would consider the M1 MacBook Air as the one that we just, we just distributed to staff and the board as our most likely Apple laptop. Another option would be the, a Google Chrome device, which would be a laptop touchscreen or a combination device, or some device running Microsoft Windows, such as a Surface, just something running the Windows operating system, which, again, could be a laptop or, and/or touchscreen. The three main considerations for a device study would be, number one, research, and all of the options I present today are all going to include a great deal of research, and that research would include how the devices are used in the classroom, but also things like the costs of the devices. We'd probably, we'd probably come out with some sort of a, if we went with this device, here's the cost over the next, say, five to maybe 10 years, depending on what the board wanted there. We'd also look at those other two areas we talked about earlier, the systems. What would it take to switch systems and go to, with a different set of Mobile Device Management Systems? What would it take if we needed to, to change all the apps? And then what kind of professional development would be needed if we, if we made that kind of a change? The other two areas, the, the interval and the representation, these are if we decided to go with a hands-on device testing as a part of the research and included purchasing devices to test. So, one of the variables would be how long do we test those devices for? And the other one would be how many grade levels or which grade levels are included in the testing. And you'll see with the device study options coming up next, we've addressed all of those issues. So, for the, the proposed device study options include, number one, not to make a change, just to, we could decide potentially that we could just continue using iPad as our primary device and move forward. That would be one option. The three device study options, however, the first one would be the potential of only doing research and talking to other school districts about the specifics, and then working with the vendors to, to bring, to bring in the, the different costs for all of the systems, the devices themselves, and all of the, the background things that would be needed to make devices work in the district. Option two would be research, but also with adding some limited hands-on device testing, which would mean we'd buy a, a smaller number of devices and test them among school district groupings. So, rather than having, having all of the, the level, grade levels represented, we'd pick one grade level, for instance, between K and 2. We'd pick one grade level between 3 and 5, a middle school group of students and a high school group of students. So, that's what I mean by limited there. And then option three will be research with a full, with all grades represented, and I'll go into those a little bit more this time. So, no change. Obviously, the, the pros there would be that we wouldn't spend any time or dollars on testing. However, the cons would be considerable in that we would not have any formal testing or, or research that had occurred, and every, all of our answers to those questions we might get would be pretty informal, and there would be no potential costs for not making a change. With option one, the pros list grows a little bit, a little bit longer. The current data reports are already available. There's a great study I've referenced here in the past that 214 did recently-
211.
Oh, I'm sorry, 211 did recently, where they did a total cost of ownership study that was very, very similar to the ones that were, that I'm proposing here, and that would be a great place to start as far as, as research only, if we were to consider just having a research option here. The other pro would be that there would be no time costs for training, implementing, or troubleshooting hands-on device testing, because option one is research only, and of course, we wouldn't have to spend money to purchase testing devices. The cons, of course, would be that the hands-on part would be secondhand, and there would also be a, a good deal of, of time for our site visits that would, that would, that would be a, an issue with option one. The potential cost would be very low for a research-only scenario where monetary costs would, we wouldn't have to be buying devices, and the only real cost at that time would be staff time. So, that's, those are the issues, the pros and cons for option one. Option two adds limited hands-on device tests. So, of course, the pros would be, we would have all of the pros from the, the previous slide on the research part of it, but we'd be adding firsthand information on how the devices worked on our own network with our own learning programs, albeit for a shorter, a short time period. Students, teachers, administrators, and staff would have firsthand knowledge of all of that. Some of the cons, of course, would be, we'd, we'd only have a limited number of students and teachers in subject areas participating. The device testing will almost certainly disrupt some aspects of learning for the, the classes that are doing the testing, and it is a relatively short time. The two time intervals are a 33-day test or a 71-day test. The 71-day test is a full semester. And then down to the potential costs, if we were to just have grade level groupings represented, the, the lowest cost we're proposing, which would be about 30 students or, or 30 participants for each of those grade level groupings, we'd be able to bring it in at about 102,000. And then, of course, if we extended that length of that test, it would go, it would double and go up to 204,000. I'll show you some grids at the end that, that explains all of these costs a little bit more in detail. Option three is essentially the same as option two, but with more devices and a, and all grade levels represented. So, that price jumps up to 357,000 for the device testing and just makes, it just makes it so we'd have to purchase more devices. And before I go on with the, the rest of it, let's talk a little bit about those costs. I am, every time I come up here, I feel like I'm saying I'm, I'm bringing you worst-case scenario costs. Well, that's what we've done here. So, even though we'd have to have an initial outlay of, of these costs, some of them we might give back, since we're only using them for one semester, it would be theoretically possible to find another district and sell the Chrome, the slightly-used Chromebooks back to them and recoup some of those costs. Because we have MacBook Air M1s in that, in that testing sequence, th- those are the computers that we use, and we'll have another lease coming up next year, we'd probably be able to keep those M1 MacBook Airs and just not purchase them when we needed to purchase them next. So, that would be another cost that we would essentially be able to recoup from this. Likewise, with whatever Windows device we decided to test. So, those numbers are definitely on the high side, and we'd probably be able to recoup some of that, those costs back. I wanted to make that pretty clear. With all of that information, our recommendation at this time is option one, the research-only without hands-on device tests. After having a law, having a very long discussion with our district tech committee and looking at all of the, the, the different TCOs that are already out there, the total cost of ownership studies that are already out there, I feel pretty confident we'd be able to get the information we need by doing a research-only recommendation, and of course, the cost is can, is the lowest possible cost in this situation. But I did not want to make that decision, obviously, on my own, I wanted to talk to the board about that before we move forward. I just have a few more pieces of information. These are in the board report. This is the grid showing the, the projected device costs and how I arrived at those numbers, whether we're, we're purchasing two class sets of devices or four or seven for option three. This one, I can explain it if anyone has questions about it, but this is to show how we would do the interval testing and when that would occur. And then I also included the two, these are, these are both calendars of first semester of next year, and it would show what days the testing periods would fall in and how I got 33 testing periods for a two-interval test or 71 for a one-interval test. So, I know that was a lot of information, but I'm here to answer any questions at this time.
Dr. Fuller, as it relates to staff costs, to clarify, those are staff costs that are already embedded, or are those incremental staff costs, meaning overtime and other expenses that we have to pay out?
Whatever, whatever one-to-one program that the district has, we will, we'll have staff, we'll, do you mean, do you mean in the, in the, do you mean in the study or do you mean ongoing?
In the study. Is it saying that potential costs would be staff time, training, et cetera?
Oh, they would be the-
Is that, is that cost that we're already incurring because they work for us? Or is it overtime hours, for example?
No, it, it would be, it would be things, it would be, they would be very, very low. It would be things like, if, like travel, for instance.
Maybe some subs.
Sub-costs, if we had-
I'm sorry, time of, yeah, the cost of training and implementing, so, sub-costs.
Yeah, it would be, it would be extremely low in the context of all the other costs that are-
So, not, so probably not worthwhile to quantify?
Probably not.
Fair enough.
But I could do that if that's where we wanted to go and quantify some of that, if you'd like.
Would not be significant. We would be able to absorb it in our current budget.
Okay. And then, the second question I have is, with options two and three, you know, if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, these are costs based on our understanding what these items, you know, retail for, and we would be buying them, does it make sense for us to potentially contact the vendors and ask them if they'd be willing to partner with us in a, in a pilot of this nature and therefore provide things? Because I, I would think that that's, at least it doesn't hurt to ask, I guess, is what I would think.
That's exactly what we would do. I'm waiting for the, for whatever the, the board, you're interested in, I will, the first que, the first calls I would make would be, we'd start to design the study, and then I would contact vendors and find out if they would be interested in, in making deals with us or helping us, or another way to do this would, that I've talked about, is partnering with another school district as well. So, right now, we use Jamf as our, as our Mobile Device Management System. We could potentially contact another school district and ask them to manage our devices and make some sort of a partnership with them. So, when we were done with the devices, they could either purchase them for us, maybe in, at a, at a reduced rate in exchange for them helping us with this program. So, there's lots of options here that we could use to get those costs back.
Sit on the table, then. Then what I'll do is I have a contact that I can connect you with on the Google side.
Yeah, I did, I did get your email, thank you.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say if you did, all right.
I did, yes.
Then, yeah, I will, we can facilitate that conversation then.
That'd be great, thank you.
Of course.
You also did mention that if we did go along with option two or three, there would be some disruption to the students having to do this. They'd be working concurrently on two different devices, is this?
Right, there, we have a couple of options there. We could, if we wanted to, just give them the device that they're testing. I, I would rather not do that, because that kind of takes the net away, if, you know, for the trapeze act, I would rather, I'd rather have them have their, their iPads that they're already used to, to using in the, in the event that they started testing something on a new, a brand-new device and they couldn't do it. I would want them to have a fallback and be able to switch to iPad whenever they needed to.
Anytime you do action research like this, there's risk.
Yeah.
Because, and it, it could impact. You know, I know Craig, when we were talking about this, you mentioned that at station when you were, there was definitely some interruption, okay? So, that, yeah, we'll try to minimize that, but you never know, because you may run into a teacher assigned something that kids can't get access, that device isn't doable, so those are the type of things that occur. So, it can be disruptive. Not saying it will, but it can be.
I gotta be honest, as a parent, I'd be asking if I'm on the bankroll if this new device gets damaged.
Our One to World, our One to World program already has that insurance built in.
Oh, I figured, but, okay.
When we've done tests like this before, frankly, we have not had that issue at all. This is a larger scale, we might, I don't see that being a, a big deal in Barrington. It's just not something that we deal with a lot.
Dr. Fuller, thanks so much for this breakdown. It's really comprehensive. We know that Apple products are, you know, the most costly, but also have the highest resale value, right, at about 30%? Are you also, did you-
Before we go on with that, a lot of people like to make that assumption, and it, and it simply isn't true.
It's not.
It's, it's not true. If you look at the, the different costs, the, and what we're paying, sometimes people get turned, turned off by sort of the, what is called the initial cost. The iPads that we're using now cost $294 each, which is, which is usually very shocking to people when they hear that. Because if you're going to Best Buy or whatever, and you're looking at all the options that are out there, they make an iPad that costs $1,200, that's not the one we have. We are, we're buying the, we are buying the, what is considered the entry level of, of what we would consider the iPad, the, is the one that we're using. However, when you're looking at the other devices, if you're going to try to match those, the, the specifications, you're not generally going to be buying entry-level Chromebooks or entry-level Windows to be able to just do basics. So, the costs are not as high as, as, as the sort of, I don't know, there's a reputation that's out there, and they're not as high as I think people assume them to be.
The chances that we would get about $90 back per $300 iPad is pretty high, for Apple.
Absolutely.
Right, but what, and that, the same can't be said for a Chromebook or a Surface? Would you, like, we wouldn't be able to-
Residual value on Chromebooks and Windows devices are either zero or they're negative, meaning you have to-
Zero to negative?
Yeah, meaning you have to pay people to come and, and take them away when they're done.
And the, and the thought was that if we were to go with option two and three, we were not to go with a Chromebook or Surface, we would try to somehow either get rid of them or keep them just in case we could use them for other purposes?
Well, for, for the, for the purpose of a test, we'd only be keeping them for six, for, for six months.
So, they would have maybe some resale value?
So, they would have some residual value, but if we decided to switch to that device as our primary device, I would come up with a five-to-10-year plan to show how that, how that residual value affects the bottom line over time. And that's a really, really good point, because I, right now, we know that our $300 iPads really only cost us 200 in the long run, but the same will not be, will not be able to be said for Chromebooks or Windows laptops.
I am aware of other districts, to Matt's point, when they've gotten rid of Chromebooks, they have to pay significant amount to just have somebody take them and recycle them. So, you don't get any money, you're paying them to take them. So, I know that's the case. I've heard that repeatedly.
My understanding too is that Apple tends to be a little bit better for the creative and design applications. Would, would we, without having that hands-only, would we be able to research deeply enough for a Chromebook or Surface and, and those kinds of similar design apps?
That is a great question, and that, that to me is my primary, that's my biggest fear, is that how are we going to be able to be certain? Because if we're going to another district and we look at how they're, how they're using a device, we'd have to find a district who value creativity as much as we do here in Barrington, and we're very aware that we value that, because we've talked about that with our staff and students the last, for the last seven years of, of research. So, we would need to make sure that whatever research that we design would definitely cover those topics, and we'd be able to find out, is there a threshold to how much you can do with, say, a Chromebook as opposed to what we're used to doing with an iPad?
Do you think we could find that out with option one, without having it in our hands, testing it?
As long as we, we, we do a, a good design, I think we, we can. We'll be able to tell if there are specific limitations, and we'll be able to tell, just from the uses of other school districts, we'll be able to at least ask the questions and hopefully be able to get good, good answers to those questions. It's a great question.
I look at this as like a, basically 10-year decision, right? As, you know, we made a, we made a decision 10 years ago to go with the Apple product, and I'd like to think that these other devices may have evolved, like you've mentioned, right? So, I'm in favor of looking at some kind of hands-on pilot because, because of the reasons that you stated. Because as we did before, was we just did the research and we didn't, we didn't do any hands-on. And I just, I, I see these as worst-case costs, right? If we're able to partner with other districts, if we're able to, you know, we're going to use these devices for a shortened period of time, if there's any way we can, you know, get some of their value back, then I would be in favor of considering at least some sort of hands-on pilot, just because I want to make sure that we, we're making a sound decision based on us touching and using the devices.
Yeah, Sandra, I totally agree. I think we, but- I think we, but do you think we need more data points as it relates to actual costs? So after Dr. Fuller has a chance to speak with the vendors at Apple, Google, Microsoft, et cetera, you know, I think it would be worthwhile for us to maybe regroup and as a committee or as a board decide, you know, you know, risk or else a cost versus return.
One of the barriers or considerations that we looked at is what, you know, like infant and campus and the, the applications we use, like Apple worked with them and some of the other ones didn't. If I remember, they didn't match, I'm not, it's not technical language, but have those things caught up in the time period? The things that we use all the time to communicate between teachers and students, between parents and teachers, between administration, you know what I'm asking?
Sure, the primary, the primary devices that we'd consider, SchoolAge, IC, yeah, the, the things that we already use. I'm fairly confident they would work on all of the devices that we would be considering. Because most of them are web-based and all of the platforms we would consider would have, would have a, a robust web browser to be able to handle that, yeah.
Amongst our, your peers and other districts who did the study, are they way ahead of us? Or like a year ahead of us like in the other district? Like can you glean from them that, you know, wow, they're like pretty much going to stick with what they had? Or they're really struggling to decide or is there any, is it too soon to ask that? Is that a fair question?
That, that's exactly the question we would be asking. And the reason, the reason that I feel strongly that we need to do some sort of, of a, a device test or at least even the research is because we need to do this in the context of Barrington 220. We can ask, and we can ask school districts questions, but until we, we compare them with, with what our needs are, I, I think, I think that's the whole point of doing a device study in the first place. And the, the one, for instance, that 211 did, they, they started with hands-on device. It was a, it was, it was a smaller scale than I expected when I found out the actual numbers that they were testing. But they did start out with Surface devices and Chromebooks. And they, they tested with students and with staff and they did that for about a year. They worked on the whole, their whole strategy and, and structure for about a year. The hands-on tests were for just a period of months. And they ended up taking Windows devices out completely. And again, this was based upon what their needs were to start with. And they only did the hands-on, the long-term testing and the comparisons between, it turned out, it went down to iPad and Chromebook. And their decision was to go with, with iPad at that time. So that would, that's one, that's one extensive study that was done in the area.
Was just this year, last year?
No, that was two, that was the year before the pandemic is when they published that study.
I wonder if there's a way to like do the preliminary research and then say, you know what? It's totally obvious, we should go with X. Or to say, wow, we're doing the preliminary research and it looks like A and B are really good choices. Maybe we should do hands-on with those, like how do you feel about that idea?
I kind of wrote this, this proposal with that, with all of that in mind. And I think the numbers and what we're proposing here is about as small scale as I would feel comfortable going and still give all the devices that are, I think are, that I would consider viable, a fair shot.
Speaking of unit district, you want to make sure you've got, you know, you've got your youngest learners as well as our high school seniors and everybody in between. Make sure you've got a good sample if you're going to do that. Because we've got so many unique things going on in this district across the buildings. You know, and the thing that, I'll give a concrete example for a little context. You know, when Matt said, when you look at other districts, there's an assumption that every other district's doing the things instructionally that we're doing. I'm going to tell you that's not the case, okay? I'm just, that's the reality, okay? We've got teachers that we have coached up and trained up in professional development that are doing authentic assessment scenarios where kids are creating. They're creating videos, they're creating, you know, assessments. It's a test, but it's a authentic assessment, it's a performance-based assessment that other districts can't even touch because they don't have the device that can even do that. What we're asking our kids to do, does that make sense? So therefore there's a, you, you, you can't assume that when you look at, you know, the certain devices can't even, we'd be taking a step back in some circumstance, we think, right? And that's what have to, you have to figure out. We don't want to go backwards. We either want to stay where we're at or improve what we're doing, right? And so that's a very important thing, especially, it's different now when we were, when we were launching it, it was different. Now we're ten years into this, right? And all of the professional development and the lessons learned and all those things along the journey. And I think it, it is something you've got to look extremely careful on and, you know, before you make that, you know, commitment. Because there is a lot to it. When Matt, he'd use in a broad level term, research, it, it's involving getting direct feedback from teachers we know that have, you know, really taken that device to its really intended purpose. And so therefore that's the type of thing we need to vet out, if that makes sense.
Well, I just think in hindsight with this year and the decisions we've made, that I super appreciate you being tight budget, worst scenario, let's not spend any money. But I think this is a pretty important decision for the future and that if it's a little bit more money to vet it out better, then I, I think we should do it, you know, and make the right choice.
I'd like to ask, can, so with the hands-on option, is the, students that you choose to be part of your group, are they going to test all four? Is one student going to test all four options? Or are you going to have four different students, each with one of the options? The question is how you can compare since every student is different. If you have four different students trying four different devices, how do you just decide which device is going to be best for everybody?
Yeah, we don't have time to do that.
No, I understand that, I'm wondering.
No, it, it would be just data collection like you do with anything else. I mean, we, we already do this type of data collection with our Wonder World studies where it's, it's, we, we would come up with some sort of a scale, we'd come up with some sort of a rubric. We would have students do, ideally, we would have a teacher design something that they've already done on the iPad and then try it with a new, with a new device and see what the differences are essentially. So the teacher would have that perspective. This, this far along, all of our students in the district at every grade level have a great deal of, they, they know how, they know how it is on an iPad already. So it's not like we're doing comparisons to nothing, we're doing comparisons to iPad. So I feel really confident in the data that we get back from our students and teachers because they're already, they already have the, the, the experience of years of using iPad in, in most cases, so.
And then are we committed to one device for all years or perhaps? I, 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 I know before we had two different devices and then your presentation was we should get everybody on the same thing. But now are we prepared to go, I, I wouldn't say backwards because we're moving forward, but to say maybe elementary school, we'll do Chromebooks and we'll do iPads for middle school and high school, just for example.
It would be very possible for that to be.
That is an option, so we don't have to have one for everybody. I mean, you're, you're not aiming for that necessarily.
It's not a goal of, of this.
I think it's open, my, it's open.
Oh, oh, right, it's definitely a possibility. By the same token, we would compare that with what, what we have now by having all the same device. We can greatly streamline, I would just put that in the costs and the, and the professional development and we'd have to have those discussions.
When we first launched the program, the high school kids had a MacBook Air, right? And the, and the K8 had the iPad. But what we found was the iPad, the laptop was limiting kids at the high school, like they could have a camera. They didn't have, you know, different ways to, to do some of the work that was going on K8. So then you had kids coming out of middle school that then now they were taking a step back instructionally, right? With the tool that they had got, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So that didn't, it was a disconnect, it didn't make sense. And that's when we came to the board at that time and said, hey, it's time to, you know, take that next step at the high school. So that's, that's a little revisionist.
But one of your other arguments was they wanted uniformity, that it was so much easier for training and for contracts and, you know, so I just.
I think that's a second, my opinion, that's a secondary thing. I think we got to get the right instructional tool.
Back then, that was never a goal. It just turned out, I would call that another, it was just something we learned along the way. Just like the residual value, it was never a goal to pick the device that would pay us back at the end, but that's what we've experienced.
It's a nice thing to have it though.
Absolutely.
You have to consider that in the costs, right?
Yeah, right, right, in the budget.
I think my only hesitation with the device study is the timing of it too. These, some of these kids are just coming back to school for the first time and over a year and a half, they've been on one device, they're, I think we just really would need to consider who we're, I mean, we're also, a lot of these kids is trying to figure out where they are, what they're missing, what we're, and then we're going to throw one more thing at them, especially at the younger level. That's my only, I, I, and I'm not saying, I just, because you want to do it in the first semester, correct? So I guess that's my only hesitation from that standpoint, I feel like.
How many kids, how many students would we be impacting?
Pointed at most, right?
Yeah, it would be, it would, it would be ninety at a, well, yeah, it would be a hundred and eighty at a time, basically. Three hundred and sixty students total for half the semester, depending on which of the options we went with.
I said maybe the second half of the semester? Oh, true.
Right.
So now, when you provided the proposal for us to move to iPads, I think it was like two million years ago. What do you think has changed then between, because I know that we talked about obviously looking at the comparison between the MacBook and the iPad at the high school. And the majority of the board decided to go forward with moving to the iPad at the high school. What different information do you think that you would get at this stage just doing the, the research two years later? I mean, do you think that it would be significant?
That's, that's why we're proposing it. There, it probably would not be too significant from two years ago on just the, the issue of the two devices that we already had experience with. But if we're, the reason we're proposing a formal device study now is to be able to not just look at Apple devices, but to bring in the other two vendors as well, the Google and the, and Windows vendors. And we just haven't done that in ten years. So that's, that's the difference. It's ten years later and it's a different time.
And then with the Chromebook, and, and again, I know we didn't do a full study, but I feel like we talked at least, you know, amongst us, when we were looking at potentially, because I think there were a lot of board members who had some hesitation as far as continuing with the iPad from middle school into high school. And so we talked about other things that look like this. And we talked about the Chromebook. And my memory, while hazy, is that it, that wasn't really even an option at the high school level for a number of the reasons that you've mentioned tonight as far as creativity and things like that. I mean, is it, do you think that it would be advantageous to look at all of these devices in each grade level? Or maybe with, for example, the high school, since we just, you know, had this topic two years ago, maybe it's, it's more of a, I don't know, an interview even of some kids who are seniors now who had both the option to have the MacBook at one stage in their high school education versus the iPad. And, you know, to perhaps be a little less disruptive at the high school, but then to go forward and, and, you know, do this kind of broad swath across K through eight. Is that something that would be considered or?
Everything you're saying is a possibility, anything's a possibility. If you wanted to do a comparison of what's available now with the devices that are available now and not comparing them to things that are four years old, I think you need to do it all now with, with what we have now, with what devices are available at this time.
And then I guess my last question would just be, I'm, I'm sure that the staff and, and the kids as well have really, well, I mean, to start with the staff in the district, I'm sure that we have, you know, purchased a ton of different apps. As you've mentioned, you know, there's like, you know, a million or so apps or whatever that we have. And there's been a lot of adjustment and a lot of professional development amongst our staff to become well-versed in that, especially when providing instruction primarily over the devices. So, you know, while I understand, obviously, we can't change the, the end of our lease, you know, is there any trepidation that you could see amongst our staff members as far as looking at, oh my gosh, I just spent the last twelve ye, you know, twelve months learning all of these new programs and apps and things like that to develop instruction in this new way. And, you know, we're trying to take what we learned from COVID and move it into the future, but now we have the potential to have to just change the whole thing and come up with, you know, in case some of these apps don't integrate well with the new technology. Do, is there like, I mean, I know it's hard to give, well, that's a four issue and the other issue is a six. But you know what I mean as far as like what the, the staff that I'm sure you've discussed this with? I mean, are they feeling some trepidation as far as having to kind of go back to square one after really running up a hill pretty quickly over the past twelve months?
Past seven years for that matter, because many of our staff members have been learning all this for the past seven years. Absolutely, in fact, that was the, that was the most significant conversation we had in our, in our district tech committee discussion. They, to, to say that our district tech committee, because remember that the tech committee, some of our tech committee members have been on the tech committee the entire time since 2014 and they've been with us through this, through everything. And to say that they were not enthusiastic about this initially would be an understatement for all of the reasons you just said. But by the same token, they also realize that things are different than they were ten years ago. And they, they understand the, they understand the possibility that there may be something else out there. And that's why we're proposing a device, a device study to begin with. Just because we realize that moving forward, maybe there is something better that we haven't considered. And this is the way to answer that question. And we may, we may discover that we made the right decision all along and we want to stick with it. Or we may decide that something better really is out there and we want to take the steps to put together a plan to move forward with something else.
Well, I mean, when I first read everything, I was just completely on board with option A or one or whatever it is. I still think my gut is that at the high school, since we've discussed this before and, you know, especially it was with, just related to the iPads and the MacBooks, I would be in favor of just kind of still looking at those two devices at the high school. It's just my own personal, I mean, broader issue for middle school and elementary because I felt like, and again, I know it was two years ago, but I felt like you were pretty convincing as far as saying, you know, I don't think that, at least Chromebook, I think we talked about. I don't remember if we discussed both of the other options, but it just didn't seem like it was a, what you would recommend for our high school students. And I hate to revisit, you know, past research that isn't exactly incredibly dated. I mean, I know two years is, is two years, but still. So that would be my, my gut response. Anyway, thank you for doing all this.
Yes.
Angela, do you think then that it would be advantageous to do some hands-on for some grade levels and not others?
Maybe, I mean, it like, I, I just, I feel like if we, and I'm not trying to make assumptions based on, on, you know, your behalf, but I feel like we've discussed, you know, some of these options, at least for high school relatively recently. And so I don't know if I see incredible value in doing a full study in the high school. Maybe it's different at elementary or middle school. And I, and I could be wrong, obviously, as we know, technology is not my forte. But I, you know, I'm just trying to think of the best way to kind of make the best decisions but yet streamline it as much as we can.
Angela, I do think you're spot on. We have spent more time recently with the high school conversation. We have not spent time recently here with the board, K8, you're right, you are correct. So we've done, you know, you have, we had the high school staff here, they all went through all that, right? And we did, but that was just the MacBook Air compared to the iPad. It did not consider these other devices. So I, I'll just give you my opinion because I'm, I'm going to. The Chromebook at that level is a big step down. I mean, I, I'm just, that's my opinion, I know it is. Now, the Surface, I don't know, you know, I, I, the MacBook, I don't know. But I know the Chromebook at the high school level, it's, it's, it's an internet device. It does not do much of anything else, it just doesn't.
It's supportive of the apps, right? That era was mentioning.
It would have a significant negative impact in instruction, iPad. And you heard that two years ago and I think it's going to, I'm just giving you my opinion because I can last opportunity I have. And, you know, that's at the high school, okay? You brought it up, I'll share with, you know, I, I just believe that. Now, I don't know about the other levels, I don't know. You know, and that's what Matt was saying, we're, we're not sure. You don't want to assume anything. We haven't done that much of that level of the other levels for a period of time. It's been longer at the other levels.
Can we get some more details? I think Katie brings up some good points on like what does it actually look like from the student level? Like a practical level, like if we did do a Surface, a Surface and iPad study, for example. And we did, you know, maybe from a research only, you came to the same conclusion that Dr. Harris said that, oh, Chromebook, even for K through eight, it's not going to make sense. But I would be interested in, you know, what does the day-to-day look like for a student, like a fourth grader who's testing it? Like how? Like, how many hours? Do you know what I mean, in terms of like how? I think that you brought up a good point. It's like, how does that work while they're also having their normal device? And like, how many hours would each kid have it? And would it be certain subjects? Is it the whole day? Is it, is it possible to get a few more details in terms of, I know you'd have to design up the study a little bit more.
What you're proposing is a device study. And that's. I mean, we already, we already use devices throughout the day. And what we would be doing is we'd be replacing the iPad with another device. And we wouldn't.
Oh, so they just have it kind of, it, it turned off in case they needed it, their usual device?
iPad would be the backup.
Okay, I see. And then they would use their, thank you.
The teacher would use the device in the study as the instructional tool.
And would we be looking at maybe all, you know, if we did K eight, would it be, you know, one through four in one school? Would we spread it out in different schools?
The way we've designed the proposal is that we would look at grades kindergarten through two and pick a representative class there for each of the different devices. Do the same thing for grades three through five, same thing for middle school, same thing for high school. So there'd be a grouping of students that are with, with those devices, and they would be testing the additional device in addition to having their iPad with them.
At each school or would it be based in a couple of select schools?
We would need to find teachers who are interested in this. We would never ever want to do a device study with a teacher who is unwilling. So our district tech committee would be the first place we would start, because those are teachers that we've worked with over time. And then we would, we would go from there, basically, and look for either teams or, or, or teachers who are willing to, to help us with this study. When we've done these things in the past, we've not had a lot of difficulty finding teachers to do these things. So I'm confident we can find some excellent teachers to do a very structured, and they'll, they'll be on board. I, I'm sure we can find teachers to be on board with this.
So this would be the primary device throughout the day and for homework and all that?
During the testing period.
Okay. I wasn't understanding that initially. I thought they were switching or something. Yeah, okay.
During the, during the testing period, that's what they would be doing is, is they'd be doing everything that they normally would have done with iPad, but doing it with a different device, still having the iPad just in case.
And so one first-grade class would be assigned like Surfaces and another Chromebooks if they were to test it.
But yet, your recommendation was not to do hands-on, just to do the research, the, the option one. So why?
I think we could get the, the information that we need for the long term with a research only. If we want to go the extra step and involve teachers and students, that's why I came up with, with three additional options, if we wanted to go that route.
You feel good about just option one and being able to come up with a good, solid recommendation, you know, for all grades?
We would replace the hands-on with, with site visits and working at other school, with other school districts to help answer those questions.
Yeah, and not students, no student involvement.
We could involve students if we wanted to. There, there'd be no reason why we couldn't bring students along if we, if we felt strongly about that.
Our staff has done this this year, hands-on, really deeply, and a lot of professional development. So I, you know, I trust them to be able to figure this out with you, with them, I would think. It's been a crazy year of learning devices and learning ways to do things and getting out of the box. And, you know, to say, hey, could I do it with the other device? Could I do it better? Would it be harder? You know, these are the things that they worked on last summer, too, beyond the call of duty. So, but we don't want to overburden, overburden them back to, you know, that.
Do we have enough time? If you came back from the research phase and said, okay, I, we've narrowed it down to two. And we, we really love these two. Do we have time after that to do a shorter, to do a?
I think we're, I think it's going to be pretty obvious.
Or you think you?
Based upon following this, I think it's going to be pretty obvious.
Okay.
From the amount of time of proposing.
Our kids and our staff are pretty skilled, and they've got a huge amount of skills, I mean, on the devices. And our kids are usually bluntly honest, right? I mean, they will just say it like it is. We found that with the high school kids especially, you know? And, and even the little, even the younger kids, they'll tell you, this doesn't work. This doesn't, I mean, they'll just say it like it is and, and tell you what will work, you know, with what they were trying to do. You know that, Matt. You've, I've heard of.
We do surveys and focus groups. We, we talk to our kids face-to-face all the time. And I go into classrooms as much as I can and have these discussions constantly.
All right. So I guess that it feels like the two options on the table are to, to follow the recommendation or to do some hands-on. Whether or not we do it with all devices or not the hands-on, I guess is, I guess is another variant. But your recommendations, if we're going to do it, we do it. And we do it as you, as you, as you described here.
Go either way, though. I, I love doing these things, by the way. You guys tell me what you want, and I am happy to do any of the options here, because.
Part of the recommendation, though, I will tell you, it came from the committee, Matt, right? Your committee said, this is what, I mean, Matt's bringing forward the recommendation from the committee, okay? But if the board really wants more hands-on information, I know Matt will do an outstanding job. I'll cut right to it. That's the deal.
Right, right, right.
The committee said, we should be able to figure this out through the research steps with option one. Matt's bringing forward the recommendation from the staff committee, correct? Yeah.
So let me throw this out there. So I'm assuming we need to tell you this summer, if we're going to proceed with a study, hands-on study. So you would like to know that, I'm assuming by our next meeting?
That would be ideal, yes.
On, on July thirteenth? So a lot of pilot, lot of pilot up for July thirteenth. So do you meet with the tech committee before then?
I don't, but if I needed to pull members together, I can always do that. We've done that in the past in the summer for a specific purpose. I can bring, it wouldn't be the whole committee. It would be some, it would be only some members.
Let me ask this question this way. Would the board be interested in having Dr. Fuller take the conversation we had here back to that tech committee, hearing the, the concerns and, and the, and the comments from the board about doing a hands-on study? And have them come back and see if they change their recommendation? Or can minimize or change the, what's, what's been presented to us for hands-on study? And then bring that back to us on July thirteenth and we make a decision whether we go hands-on on July? Seem reasonable? Or, or if, we can also say we're not interested in that.
I doubt they're going to change their mind. I, I am the one who convinced them, after all, to do any kind of hands-on study. So I, I think, I think the, I think the result will be the same, and it will be a very small group, too. That, that's something that I can almost guarantee you to.
Scattered. You're going to have to pick a time.
It would be a Zoom meeting that we would do and just have a single discussion. But I could do it. It's just that I, I have a feeling I know what they would say.
Given our discussion, do board members still have concerns that if we did not do a hands-on only study, we, that we wouldn't be informed enough to make a choice?
I'm going to go back to my comment that I, I feel like we haven't done this before, and this is a ten-year decision, and I want to make the most informed decision. And. But I, I could be the minority, and that's fine.
Well, I mean, I can agree with you, Sandra. I mean, maybe, maybe the point here, though, is, and Dr. Fuller, I totally understand why you did what you did in regards to giving us, you know, worst-case scenarios. I mean, there's four weeks adequate time to work with some vendors and get an idea of, you know, whether they would be able, would be willing, actually, to, you know, entertain helping us in the, in these pilot studies and therefore maybe providing data or providing resources or even providing discounted resources so that we can have an adequate view. Because I think that might help with the decision-making progress of the board, too. I mean, albeit, you know, to Katie's point, maybe somewhat disruptive. But I would hope that, you know, again, with how resourceful our teachers are and how, you know, just as Dr. Harris said, how bright our students are, you know, it would hopefully be minimal. And, I don't know, I'm kind of thinking on cuff right now, off the cuff right now. You know, for some of these classes, at least in the lower grades that I'm aware of, there's mixtures of, you know, teachers and students. In other words, you might not have, you might have sixty students in a class because the teacher's going to switch back and forth. And maybe you can pick students to participate in this rather than forcing the entire class to. Maybe that would, you know, allow certain students who might not be able to test be, you know, free of that responsibility, too.
At the middle and high school level, I would, I already know what groups I'd go to. We have groups of students who are into technology already established, and I would go to those groups first as ones who would be interested in at the middle and high school level. Elementary, I would not be able to do that. We'd need to use a full class with a teacher who's willing. Just wouldn't be, it wouldn't be practical to try to intersperse a bunch of devices among an elementary school with a teacher not involved in it.
Got it. Okay.
Just to clarify, are you, are you hoping that if a vendor would partner with us to pilot, we could take the cost down potentially?
Turn it out, yeah.
I was going to ask, there's, I, I can almost guarantee you, there, this will not be free. It just won't be.
That's fair.
So the, the question would be, how much further down do you want? Because right now, we can do this for one hundred and two thousand. How much further down is the goal for me to get this? Because no matter what, I'll get it as cheap as possible, no matter what we do.
And this doesn't have any, like, if we were able to redeem some cost back, that's not in there at all.
Not in here at all, no.
So I would think we could at least probably get, in my head, I'm thinking of at least get thirty percent back, but it might even be more, a device. But we're not sure, right? So this is, this is the way to present it.
You don't, we just don't know what that market bears.
I don't want to, I don't want to promise something I cannot.
And I'm not asking you to.
Only for the Apple product.
But that's after years of use. We're talking about a couple of months here. So I think it would be different for the other devices. So, so let me ask the board this. Are we interested in doing a hands-on or are we happy with the recommendation to, to do the research without a hands-on? Do we have four people that are, that are fine with just doing the research and then doing hands-on?
Totally fine with either option.
I'm for just doing the research. I think it's less, I, I agree with Katie. It's less.
Two for research only, maybe three.
Why would you do a showcase?
I'm trying.
Unless you're asking, what do you?
I would, I, I prefer to get more data on the hands-on options before I say either way. But I'm in, you know.
At least get more data on the doing a hands-on?
Yeah. Because I, I don't want to say at this point, it's research only. But that's just me.
Anybody else? So I, I think there are two for research only.
Do we have, we have at least a couple of devices that the staff would be testing or the district tech committee could test? Or are, we're saying just not even a single one that you all could play around with?
We could absolutely do that. If we wanted to get some representative devices and it just do, and just have them to discuss, like, we could do that. It's not part of the, of this proposal, but we could absolutely do that for a very, very low cost, obviously. Like, to have like preview devices or test devices, just sitting, sitting around to, to do our own staff testing.
Would that be helpful to the district tech committee? Or it sounds like you don't, you wouldn't even need that according to your recommendation.
It would hurt to have, to have, if, if we're only doing research, it wouldn't hurt to have them. We could probably gain more, we could do more testing based upon what we learned from research.
That would still be option one, right?
It would still be option one.
We would just have a few preview models.
Modified option one.
Yeah, yeah.
So I.
I guess.
Go ahead, Mia.
I'm comfortable with research only if, unless it comes back and you say, wow, we're really not sure. And then I think we, we test them out, you know? And I think that we don't have to be on the tightest budget ever. But I trust you guys that if you can look at it, and like Dr. Harris said, Chromebook's probably not an option for high school with more research or to know that with the expertise that we have, I'm, I'm comfortable. But if, if it's like, wow, we're really not, you know, we're a little torn, then come back and say, hey, can we do some research with this device? I think there's enough time at this point to do that.
So I'm kind of three for research, trying to.
So I think that the district tech committee sounds very confident that a research-only option is enough information, even to distinguish between different design applications, right, and creativity applications. I do think I would still encourage the district tech committee to buy at least a couple of those preview devices just to kind of get your hands on it, to make extra sure. That way, if what Leah brought up, if you're like, oh, wait, this Surface, we really should try it with the students, you could let us know. So I think I, you know, I would say I'm fine with the research-only option with the encouragement that, you know, we, we acquire a few of the preview devices just to be sure.
Very, very reasonable, yes.
I think that's four for research only with a asterisk that you can, you have some leeway to get a few devices to test out. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? One, two, three, four, right?
Love that idea.
All right.
And I think Angela said you'd be okay, right? I mean, just either way.
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think we've got that, so move forward.
Very exciting.
Let's do the.
Just so the board knows, I know Dr. Fuller and the team. If they get into it early on and you, if you think there's a reason, you can come back and say, hey, I think we need to maybe do a little bit, I, please do that. But, and you've done that before, but, yeah.
Excellent. Great discussion.
Very excited about this. Thank you.
I can see you're excited.
Oh, my gosh. Now, where were we? Wow, where were we?
Toys, huh?
You're in the bottom.
I think the next discussion item we have is our agenda for July thirteenth. Let's see.
Welcoming Dr. Bob.
Welcoming Dr. Hunt. We have, it's not up on the screen, but if you guys go to that on your, on your laptops there, we have the, some list of authorized depositories on the consent agenda, public hearing on the ESAR funds, our board priority discussion. We could add to that board protocol, sorry, well, this is COVID protocols, this is for a discussion item. But we could also add an action for board protocols or communication, whatever we end up calling it.
Superintendent and board communication.
I forget what it's called.
Something or another. Something or other.
You could put board and superintendent communication, but have that as an action item.
And also, we're going to look at the policy for public comment.
Policy for public comment. We could also give that to, I'm just, we've got a lot going on here. We could also give that to the policy committee, too, to look at first, but.
We're not scheduled to meet until August, right?
And I think that it probably should be, I mean, I love to do things in committees, but I do think that if we're going to kind of change, it almost seems like, like not just a policy, but a, a practice. Like, maybe it's more of a board decision? I don't know.
I agree.
I've got it.
So would we be discussing a policy change or voting on it? Well, I think probably they would give us a direction to go back and then look at reviewing it, I would guess.
Could be.
You would discuss it first, that's policy two colon two thirty. And then if you were going to make edits or changes, however, how much discussion that takes, then you'd have to take action and then edit for the future meeting. If you wanted to add something.
You brought up earlier, I think we owe it to our families to, I mean, I would like it to be behind, beyond a discussion item, our mask policy. I know we're waiting for direction from ISB and IDPH, but at a certain point, we have to make a decision as a board and not drag these parents along anymore. And I think that time is here.
So we have that on here as a discussion item. What I think I hear you saying is you want to change it to an action item.
I'd like to. I mean, our, our meeting after that isn't until August, and I, I think that that's.
I think it's difficult to decide that when we don't know what ISB is going to come out with in their, at the end of all the district school years. Because, I mean, academic years. So would they potentially change their guidance?
If we're calling it an action item, that means we, we're going to, there's a motion that's going to be in the, in the computer, but we don't know what the motions would look like. I mean, I, I, I guess, and again, I, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I don't think it's just mask or no mask. I mean, I think there's, there's, there's nuance here on, you know, if we're not going to mask, how we're going to manage things. And so I'm just concerned. I, I agree. I don't want to push, kick it down the road, but I'm concerned that if we're going to announce to the public that we're going to have an action item, we need a specific action item. And I don't know if we're ready to have a specific action item. I, I guess that's my concern.
So we agreed a couple of meetings ago, I think it was, that we were going to at least have a discussion on July thirteenth. And then if, if it wasn't clear, that we would add another board meeting if we needed to so that we could have that, have the decision made before August. So I'm happy to go either way. But if we, if we put, we can't have an action without putting an action item on the agenda. So we have to have an action. We can decide not to approve that or not to have a, that a motion. But you can't do it if you don't have the action on the agenda.
Can we, can, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to say this. Are we able to have it as an action item but not take action? Right?
It builds an expectation in the public that we are, though, and then everyone's going to be mad at us, one way or the other. If we say we're going to decide and then we say, oh, we didn't get any guidance, we're not going to decide. It puts us in a very uncomfortable situation as a board. It puts us in a very uncomfortable situation as a board. And it disappoints the community who says, oh, I'm going to know that day. You know, so I don't want to set us up that way.
So if we have it as a discussion item, we could always, we, and, and there is a clear action item that could emerge from that. We could always schedule another board meeting to take action.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to say.
Stemming from the discussion item, right?
But how long does it take to schedule it? I would assume that a minimum of 48 hours, yes?
48 hours.
Okay.
I, I just don't see what, like, two days is going to do. I mean, I, I would just put it on there as an action item because, you know, I personally think that, you know, parents are asking us, like, what do you, what is the plan for next year? And they're making their decisions on, you know, where they're going to send their kids to school based on our decision. And, you know, that's already pushing it pretty far out. I mean, I don't know what entrance exams look like for private schools and things like that. But middle of time, they're saying, hey, decision has been made. We do not need to do anything further. We already know there is whatever. There is no mask mandate. There's whatever. You know, we have clear and concise instruction, and that's it. Or we say, wow, we really, nothing has changed. They still have not come out with anything. It's really on us to decide and, and tell our families, okay, this is the direction that we're going to go. And I think mid-July is, is kind of as far as you can push it. So I would be all for just putting it on the agenda as an action item then. And I think we can shore up exactly what the action item is, like, what the vote is, um, as it gets closer.
All we can do is act on the information that we have at the time, right? So-
So I think that parents, sorry, I think parents are asking us to make a decision with whether or not we have the guidance by that point. I agree with you.
Board can make a decision on this without action. If you, or you can do action. You can do it. It's not required to do action. I just want you to know that. I mean, you can provide direction to the superintendent in a discussion item and say, do this. If you want to make it formal and action, you can. You don't have to, to direct the superintendent to move forward in an operational fashion. Does that make sense? So I, I just want you to understand.